Do rest the honor, please.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together as council this evening and as members of administration in the media, and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve the residents of the town of Cartston and surrounding area, and we pray that the decisions we make and the deliberations we enter into will be fruitful and helpful for this area, that we can help this area to prosper and to grow, and we're grateful for the freedom that we enjoy and for the prosperity that's ours, and we again pray for thy Spirit to be with us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, councillor. Well, today is the twenty-sixth day of November. We recognize the media at this town council meeting. We have Temple Star represented here, and we have a charity too. Thank you so much for being both there. Before I start, I would like to first of all let you all know that we had a former politician in this area that passed away, Jack Eddy passed away, served this area well, and the funeral is out this Saturday, and the Stick Center on the East Hill at eleven o'clock, and meet the family at ten o'clock. Right? We also want to let the public know that we have a phone conference that will happen a little bit down the line when we reach bylaws and policies. Councillor Brown is between here and Edmonton and wants to join us on those conversations, and there is another item under other business. She also would like to participate, so we'll have the system set up for that. So we will call the business to order, the meeting to order. So we have an addition, Councillor Barnes.
Yep.
Maybe we'll put it on the seven B if you don't mind?
Fine.
So it's about Alberta Southwest.
The CARES application that we need to discuss for a letter of support.
For Alberta Southwest?
Yep.
Okay. Maybe you can talk to us about that later on.
Yep.
There is, there are no delegations today, so we have the minutes of November the twelfth. I read them and find them representative of what we discuss at the table. So if there are no questions, we need a motion to adopt those meetings.
And make a motion to adopt the minutes of November the twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
We adopt the council's agenda?
We, we will, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm going a little too fast. I was giving you the word. Councillor, would you like to adopt it with the amendment?
I, I move to adopt the, the agenda with the addition of the CARES application letter of support.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now we have adopted the minutes. Thank you so much. I was going a little fast here. Okay, we're going to turn the time to Jeff, and I'm sure Jeff sleeps and dreams of budget. And I'm sure he lost a few hairs just trying to figure out how to balance that budget. Okay.
Okay, you've got the big stack of papers in front of you again. I'm, I'm working off a couple of them here because Hocken and I were doing a few things this afternoon. The good news is since the last time we met, we've gone from about two hundred and, I believe it was two hundred and nineteen or two hundred and twenty thousand, our deficit's seventy-five thousand. And there's a couple of things, I think, that make this budget fairly within reach, to be frank. I think we're getting really close.
Good.
So, I'll give you, I'll give you a general, we've been really going through with Kevin our electrical revenues and the impact of the solar, and so I'm going to talk about that a little bit further on, but that's actually having, at least right now, it looks like an additional positive benefit, even more so than we had initially forecasted. Of course, none of that until it's running can be, can be shown, but right now it's looking a little more positive than we thought, which is good, and then we have the electricity distribution by law on the agenda tonight, and so we've implemented those rates into the new budget, so that helped a little bit. Bart and Brandon have been working a lot on looking at alternatives to capital, so I'll give you an example. We have, I believe that this, and we'll get to it, so I might be giving you the wrong street. It's either Seventh or Sixth, where they've been cameraing the lines, and on one of those streets we have an older sewer line, but it's dead straight. So when they camera it, there's no heaves, no cracks. Everything looks great, and so they've got a quote to epoxy line it versus replace it.
Oh.
Because it's obviously very stable. It's not shifting with frost. It's not being affected by, it's probably forty, fifty years old, but, but straight as an arrow, and Bart feels we can epoxy line that for thirty or forty thousand dollars less than digging it up and give it another twenty to thirty years of life. So a few things like that we're working through, and we'll go over those specifically. Anything before I just start like we do, going through the pages here, or start going through the pages?
When we get, when we get to that sewer line, I was going to ask a question then.
Sure.
Jeff, have we had any phone calls that concerns about lead lines?
Sure. So it's been in the media recently. Again, this came up a number of years ago too. I don't remember exactly, but I do recall we actually posted our water testing results on the website because there was a number of people, none of them locally, by the way. There's usually, they're interest, special interest groups from, on a national level or provincial level, and they're very concerned about levels of lead. And you might recall, in fact, you got a letter to council exhorting you to write letters to your provincial people and all this stuff from a special interest group. We've always had, we have, we do have lead presence in the water. It naturally will occur on some level, but it's about one-tenth of the provincial average, or acceptable provincial level, sorry. I think it's like point zero zero five parts per million. We're at point zero 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 five.
Zero five.
Oh, wow.
So we're very low. So Bart is actually going to try and do some work on that just to, well, actually, I shouldn't say proactively, because it's going, it, it, this petition on the concerns for lead has reached the level of the regulators, and so we are now going to be required in the upcoming indefinite years to do extensive water testing in more locations throughout the community on a very regular basis. So it takes a little time. It's going to take some testing costs, not particularly on risk, but we will have a more strict regimen of water testing, and it has to be right out of the tap at certain locations throughout your whole community, so.
So with, with that in mind, what are we placing our lines with?
Generally, it's all PVC.
Okay.
So anything that's new is PVC. You know, Bart is, will be compliant, but he was telling me some frustrations, like we have to do very frequent tests at the pump station. Well, the only thing between the water plant and the pump station is the steel line.
Right.
That's, that's it. So there isn't a place where there would be lead finding its way into the system, for example, but that's what's going to be the requirement, so we will.
Go ahead, Councillor Barnes.
Would, would that, would, would that mean some of the older homes still have galvanized pipes?
Yeah.
Are, those are the ones, there, there is some lead there?
There may potentially be some homes with lead in certain.
Especially when there, there's sodders that are in there.
Yep.
And is there, like, would there be a situation where we would have to require them to replace those lines, the PVC or, or PEX?
You know, I'm not familiar with what that obligation would be on homeowner at this time, but our testing is going to be in many more sites than it has been historically.
Yeah.
So we'll start to get a feel for sections of the community, but Bart's fairly confident. We don't have very much in lead in the community, as far as mains at all, I think.
Yeah.
And then, but there might be some old service lines. That is true.
I know with, my house is an older home, it's almost a hundred years old, and there was a lot of those galvanized lines, and I ripped them all out and put all new PEX lines in there because I was concerned that there could be possibly be lead and stuff, so.
I would imagine in time, the government will provide regulations and
Yeah.
we will have to apply them, I guess.
That could, that could be costly.
On a distribution level, we're very compliant.
That's good.
Yes.
Good.
Go ahead.
Okay, the budget, page one, nineteen, and some pages we'll skim over pretty quick because this is now third iteration. So, and I'm still feeling really good because we have two more meetings.
Yeah.
Between now and when we have to, to do something. So we've, I appreciate we've been, we've been doing good. I'm not panicked about it at all. Mayor, we're doing good. The first thing you'll notice on there is we added back in the policing costs, one zero one one four zero. Now, we did this on a bit of an unconventional number, and Mayor Cronin, you sat in on the webinar with me where we did not put the fifteen percent in this year because the solicitor general stated that if it comes in this year, they'll try and be under the fifteen percent and then work us into a little over the fifteen percent over three years.
Correct. Yeah.
So that is a ten to twenty percent incremental increase.
Yeah.
So with that, sorry, we're looking at the revenues. So that's a tax revenue because we would put it as a requisition on the tax forms, and you'll see the exact offsetting expense in the expenses. So we put it back in. It had no impact on the budget because we put the offsetting revenue that you would tax for. It's not the right kind of revenue that we want, but it's, it's offset. The next thing, and I know we weren't looking to add expenses to this budget, but bear with me. We put in a revenue side for the ACP grant for the intern. I had applied last fall to host another municipal fair's intern. That has been a positive experience for the community on two occasions, for both us and intern, and so we seem to have a good rapport with municipal fairs in hosting an intern, and I'd like to maintain that kind of relationship with them. The province offsets the majority of those costs for that intern in the first year, and not all. There's a twelve thousand dollar spread between the grant and the actual roughly twelve thousand dollars. So it's currently in. We can debate the merits of that as we get closer to the end of this process, but I had forgotten when we did the budget, I'd made the application when it opened.
Okay, so do you want to let it go as information right now?
If, if you want to debate it now, that's totally fine. I support us getting an intern in the next year. I think it's a good thing for us.
Personally, when we have had an intern, I saw how much it helped your work, Jill's work, and your office work in general. It was a benefit to us because they could focus on certain aspect of what municipal services are. One, one time became the director of FCSS. The other one was writing all the policies. We had a really good intern, and so I am looking at Councillor's and thinking, if we had an intern that was interested in Act Dev, that could be a very, very good fit. So that's the type of fit I'm, I'm thinking, if we had someone who had.
In year one, it's very broad exposure. In year two, it specializes.
Right.
But I haven't done it for three years because I've been trying to make sure I had a really full itinerary of things for them that they can work on.
Right.
So I've held off. Municipal fair is requested at times that we participate.
And we, we held off, I know, one year. Personally, I support the idea. I really do. I see the benefit to the town. And twelve thousand dollar, at the end of the day, is not a lot of money for an intern.
So would this be for two years or one year?
This is just one year at a time.
That's why I said.
The grant reduces in year two, but you can kind of get a good feel what value you're going to have with the intern in year two.
Forty thousand for the first year, yes.
Correct.
What was the name of the intern we had the last one? They went up to the county.
Tyler Andreessen?
Pardon me?
Tyler Andreessen.
Tyler, yeah.
He became.
Corporate services at Rockyview County.
Wow, good for him.
I mean, we trained them well, trust me.
He was sharp.
And Alex is with the college.
With the college, yeah. Although she's got a little baby at home now.
Good for her.
But I mean, everything we have had going through this office has served us very well. We managed to get with our intern a grant one year for the power when nobody would give us money.
That's right.
He managed to give.
He got the grant, yeah.
To get us money. It was amazing.
The next three lines that are clumped there, starting in one zero seven eight five one, are, we talked last meeting about those studies, and so what we've done in this budget is we fully funded the storm sewer in the water study via third parties. So in this case, ACP is the intended. And then the Community Futures or the Trade Corridor study, we have joint funding with those two entities, with the town funding fifteen thousand still. So we only have that partially funded, but we were able to reduce significantly or increase significantly the funding sources from those. So the CARES grant is in process on that one. It's kind of half done, so it'll be in. We have all the resolutions we need from both councils, so we're good there on that one. And then Alex has been working with Tony on the W or the CF-specific funding. So I know they were on the phone yesterday for some time, so.
Yeah. So, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just on the, the number, so Jeff, just clarify for me. So you're going for grant funding through Community Futures, Western Act Dev for thirty-five, because I know the resolution that was made at Community Futures was regardless of the outcome, Community Futures would fund twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Based upon their programs and that they have some money available for projects. So that's guaranteed.
Okay.
And then whatever, you know, if they can get it.
CARES comes through with some.
CARES comes through if the rural opportunity grant comes through from Western Act Dev.
I'm happy to reduce our fifteen grand.
Mm-hmm. Really?
Right.
I can't imagine that.
It doesn't offend me in the least. So, actually, I think the conversation with Tony was yesterday that if CARES came through at fifty cent dollars, and if rural opportunities came through, that we would look at splitting the difference potentially with CF locally and the town. We could look at that at that point.
Okay. Anyway, so you, you do have twenty-five secured for sure.
Great. The other big chunk out of this budget, council, was not, was, was taking out the cost for the additional peace officer program, the shared peace officer program. So, actually of interest, I had a good conversation with McGrath after that, but we all got a letter, including McGrath, today from Boxall, who's looking to contract out two days a week of the peace officer.
Wow.
So we send them McGrath's way to make sure that they talk, because that might be a great option for McGrath, just because they, they don't want to pay a full-time peace officer.
That's a bit of a jump from Boxall.
They mail us, they mail everybody, but their decision, not mine.
So we wouldn't participate with McGrath at all?
No, right now, this is, that, we're out on that.
We're out.
That, that cleared up a bunch of cash in budget.
Close to a hundred.
It was too much cash upfront for us.
Yeah.
Was it like seventy?
The idea was good, but the cost was too much.
Well, then we had another thirty in just additional training recruitment.
I was gonna say, it was a hundred grand.
Hundred grand. So it was a big piece of getting this number down, for sure.
Yeah.
I don't have anything that's changed since our last meeting on page two. Again, that's just some other revenues. We'll stay pretty consistent. The last page of revenues on page three is all the same. We were working, Hocken's been working with Kevin on our revenues for electrical. One thing I want to point out there, and this will become hopefully more clear, and please don't ask a lot of follow-up questions because it's not very clear for me right now. What we're struggling with is when we look at the impact of the solar farm, it is having higher impact than we thought on the distribution and transmission tariffs that we base our rates on. And I'm not comfortable with that, because what I'm trying to work with Kevin and Hocken, we've all agreed, is that we want to base our rates on what those costs are irrespective at this point of the solar farm, pretending it was status quo. We didn't have.
Not yet.
And there's a bunch of credits we're projecting from the solar farm, reducing what we think our distribution tariff cost will be. So we're trying to pull those out. So what you're going to see in the December budget is we're going to create a generation department, and all the credits and expenses from the solar farm will park in generation, and they won't get mixed up with your distribution charges, because it's really hard to build a rate when we have all these things coming and going from the solar farm in distribution. And so the effort right now, we weren't ready to do it tonight, but for December is we're hoping to break all that out so we can really look and say, here's the impact of the solar farm. The costs, the credits, the generation, the pool, the whole thing, in a department. So that'll be next time. But we were really messing around with that quite a bit the last few days. So that's all you're seeing there is just the new forecast from Kevin on page three. Those actually helped our bottom line on the budget a bit, so that, that was a good thing. On page four, which that reminds me, Sharon, sorry, councillor, it's a little off topic. Do you have some of those info pieces on sort of, before we end the meeting, we want to be able to pass them out. We've got a bunch made up.
Good.
Page four is just the offsetting expense on policing. It adds, third way down the page, it adds the intern salary under admin costs. That's why there's a large increase there, but there's a grant to offset that. There's a small increase in training, which is the intern, and two thousand, that's covered by the grant. And then we just are looking at this point for that thousand dollars, two thousand at a time. So when you go down to two one two two oh seven contracted services, historically, we've been under budget in that, so we knocked it down twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. These aren't huge items, but six or eight of those make a difference.
Yeah.
And so we're, we're now looking at those in the budget. Where are we historically of the lower budgets? Where can we, we tidy it up?
Two one two two oh seven contracted services.
Yep.
The ICF.
So, yes, we had that as the facilitator fees for the ICF in this year. A lot of that's going to roll over.
Okay.
And we're going to see a big chunk of that roll into twenty twenty.
Okay.
But in twenty nineteen, we plunked it all in there, and the optimistic anticipation it would all be done in twenty nineteen. Let's put it that way. So some of that will no doubt roll over. Page five, we added a number of items under the miscellaneous public relations. Well, we reduced a piece, and then we added some pieces. We reduced the website down to ten thousand dollars in costs, and we're going to see what we can get done for that. So we'll bring that proposal to council, and we're a little more ready for that. And then we added some of those things we'd committed to last year, like the sandwich program that Carrie Roberts was heading up. We're sponsoring that annually now, so we added that. That was seven hundred dollars last year. We added a few dollars to support the job-ready program in there as well, and we added what I hope is a high number. I hope actually by next month's budget, this number's smaller. But, and, and I want to talk about this in a closed session, if you want to discuss it further, but to support Blood Tribe Health in their health study, they may be looking to us for some funding. The details of that, we can probably disclose here soon, but not yet.
Yeah.
So I have it part in there for now.
Tell me about two two one one oh four, the liaison.
Yes. So we don't have that position right now.
It was Oulton's position.
So, or Ryan Schmidt or Horton, so we did not put that in for this year.
Okay.
That was one of those, and we're looking for, we, we haven't had a conversation, council, about, you know, what are we doing on the labor side? What are we looking at? So we looked at positions that we could eliminate for the year and see what happens. So what we've done is instead of the Ryan or Horton position, is we've got a guy who's coming in to do all the pound duties, clean the pound, care for the animals, and he does that after, in the evenings and on weekends for an hourly rate, and he's going to do that, which will free up the peace officer time to be able to be out more.
Sure.
Because it was taking an hour plus every day on pound duties for peace officer. And so this way, we have a young guy in town who's doing that for us, doing a great job. He goes in, walks, lets the dogs run around for a while, takes them for a walk, cleans up after, and feeds them, so it's really good.
Jeff, I noticed throughout the budget, and I called you on it the other day and spoke to you about it, we have a lot of money being sent, spent on cell phones. Tell me about FOIP and cell phones.
I'm not sure what your relation you want in there.
Well, when we're supplying a cell phone to our employees.
Correct. Yeah.
But they're using it for personal business.
Yeah.
How do we separate it with FOIP?
So they're aware that anything on a municipal-owned device is FOIP-able.
Okay.
And it is?
That's what we tell them.
Personal stuff.
That you're welcome. So what I tell the staff is if they work alone or they're assigned a phone, they can use it if they want it as their personal phone, provided it never breaches the plan parameters.
Right.
So they're not bumping us over for additional charges. But many things like, for me, I have four gigs of data, X amount of minutes, and I don't ever go over it, even with personal use of it.
Okay.
So if they start to bump over the plan that we have prescribed, then they have to pay the difference, and anything done on my device or any of the staff devices is FOIP-able.
Right. Okay.
So it's, it's not the device for a lot of your personal, you know, affairs. Let's put it that way.
Not a Facebook thing.
Well, I mean, I have Facebook online, and I'm fine if you want to go scroll through the Facebook. Like, you know, it just doesn't bother me. If someone wishes to FOIP my last three Facebook posts in the last ten years, you're welcome to. They don't implicate me in any way.
Yeah, right on.
So again, it's just using them for that purpose. If I have something more sensitive, I'll log in on my own computer.
Right.
And do it that way. So that's how we work, the councillor. With cell phones, that, those are costing us almost half what they were three, four years ago.
Same.
We switched carriers. When we went with Shaw for our phones, Shaw owns Rogers.
Right.
Or Rogers owns Shaw, sorry. I don't remember who owns who here. But when we decided we'd go in with all of our land and sell with both companies, and they've dropped things dramatically, and also our usage is pooled across the organization. So for example, Brandon and Sean have really high data use, based on the nature of what they do, and I have really low data use, but they can draw from my unused data. So we're all just pulling from a pool of data and a pool of minutes.
That roll over?
Yeah. Well, no, it, it's so much a month.
Yeah.
But when everyone has kind of four gigs assigned.
To share.
Yeah.
It's really quite a good bank, and we're saving a considerable amount.
Good for you.
So those are the public relations pieces that we added, and, and you can see down further, there were just some implications on the peace officer, second peace officer program where that was reduced. So that's everything I have on page five.
Okay, now, we're spending still twenty-five hundred dollars to Remington for the parades.
It's a carriage just.
Yep.
Yeah.
Five times.
Five hundred, yeah.
Five hundred dollars to Shaw.
That's right.
And what carriages did we use last year? Because I know a lot of us used our own vehicles and stuff.
Right. So they won't bill us if we don't use them, and they don't charge us for the carts.
This is just a rider, put in there.
It's there if we need it, but yeah, if we don't use them, they don't bill us.
Okay.
We don't have like a retainer with them to use carriages, and they don't charge us for carts. So I think we're okay there.
When is, when is Santa Claus parade, by the way? Is that this weekend?
Four o'clock?
I thought that was you, councillor.
Yeah, it is.
It's this weekend or next weekend.
I told the Remington guys, they called me, and I told them I'm going to take my own vehicle, so I need to get my, a little bit warmer.
I need.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, we'll get that found tomorrow.
Okay.
So you're going to tell the kids we're cutting back on the candy, is that what you're gonna do?
No, I'm just saying, we overspend on it, so your carriage budget's covering your candy overspending.
Yeah. Well, I found if I can save five hundred bucks.
Two boxes for the Raymond Parade next year.
Okay, all right.
I actually got the box at the Raymond Parade with no candy in it. I was out halfway through.
Guys.
Anything else up to page five?
No.
Okay. Page six, and, and one of our significant savings in this budget was on page six, and this will be news to you, councillors, self, because who else is on fire?
Councillor.
This will be a bit news, because I met with Danny today, but you're going to hear about this more at your board meeting, I think it's next Monday, isn't it?
Next Thursday.
Thursday, okay. I knew it was soon. But we'll get to that in a second. Really, those first three items you see in the purple there are just related to the second peace officer program that we've rolled back on. And then the next one was FIRE, and for you on the ICF, not to talk about this too openly, you know that that may still be any number of things. But for what we had budgeted, we had put eighty thousand a year to reserve for the next truck. And last night after ICF, I met with Murray for a minute, and I said, hey, are we on the same page with that? And he said, well, I, we weren't reserving eighty, we were going with forty. I said, well, I don't think we're going to keep up on the schedule at forty. And so he says, well, I'll meet with Danny. Well, Danny came in on something else today, and Hocken was in with me, so we met. And Danny's going to be proposing to you councillors next Thursday that each community reserves fifty thousand, and he thinks that will, he's getting some estimates from the company that built the truck on what they might give for trade-ins on future trucks. And they also had a surplus in the FIRE authority this year, which he's going to be able to reserve.
Right.
And so he's recommending, I don't know what that meant, but.
I do.
So.
Because the mayor reads everything. I want to make sure she knows that we're doing her job.
You are councillor, you are.
We had a surplus in the FIRE authority this year that can be reserved for future equipment. So we had eighty thousand in there. For this budget, we moved it down to fifty.
Oh, same with thirty.
And then Danny's going to be proposing the, the requisition for twenty twenty as well. And then Danny's going to be proposing the requisition for twenty twenty as well. But he's suggesting it will be flat. So we were able to bring that down because we'd assumed an inflationary piece in there.
That deserves a fist pounding.
Tell me, tell me.
I like that story, flat requisition. That's what I like to hear is music to my ears.
Tell me about this thirty five thousand for the regional coordinator. What's his responsibility?
That's the other portion of Jeff.
Do you want to ask your question, then we'll get to that? Because that's a little more meaningful.
Oh, I was just going to say, part of the reason we were able to come in where we are is that we've got a long term contract with the town with the water and park now. So it's not on a yearly basis. We're able to try to add better.
Well, that's.
How many years?
Three or five. About four years out or something.
Regardless, that's a good contract.
That's, that's good.
Every year, they didn't know for sure. Yeah, now we do, so.
May I address the coordinator discussion?
Please go ahead because that's your other hat.
Yeah. And I think, councillor, I wouldn't say that it's definitive yet. It's in there to cover it. In fact, the new draft agreement, councillor Selk, because you and I met on this, is coming to me tomorrow through Brownlee. So I'll look at it a little closer then and see where we're at. But essentially what it is, councillor Bangry, is someone who will be a regional coordinator between the fire departments in McGrath, Cartston, and the villages, working with the respective fire chiefs to coordinate training, purchasing, and some of those other things. But that position will also start looking at matters of emergency management in each community and safety codes enforcement in each community. And I'll be careful what I say here based on our discussion last night. There's some debate of how the governance of that is going to fall still. I don't want to suggest that's a done deal. There's much discussion to still be had on fire governance on the ICF table before that's concluded.
Like, in regards to who's his boss?
Well, in regards to who's paying the exact proportion of what in this scenario and what does that look like? So right now, this is simply that cost split three ways between McGrath, Cartston, and the county.
Equally, it's equally split.
And the county's on board with this?
Yeah, very much.
Councillor Selk, go ahead.
I think what's most important, too, is that this takes a lot of stuff off of Jeff Murray's and the CAO Wade or whoever. Takes a lot of stuff off their plate, which they don't have time for. So we have somebody who will be responsible for all of those things. So that's why it's a good investment.
The twenty twenty changes to the Alberta Emergency Management Act for directors of emergency management are frankly onerous for CAOs. I'm not trying to say I need out of a bunch of stuff, but they are becoming really, really onerous in response to emergencies that have happened in the province. And so they're putting a ton on there. One of the discussions of this position was that potentially this person is the director of emergency management for all the communities and I would become a deputy director. But then they would have the time, for example, to put on regional training, which is not required, by the way. It's not optional anymore. I must have a tabletop. I must have my social services training. That will have to be done on an annual basis. So now we can have them on a regional basis coordinated by this individual and it's off my desk. And we need to submit our entire emergency management plans to the province online, literally page by page typed in. I dread it. And we're like ten percent done because I feel guilty on occasion and start and then I bail out. But those are the kind of things, councillor, that the hope is that this person can take on.
Kudos to you on two thirty two, two hundred.
All right, I'll take it. I don't know what it is yet.
Sidewalk.
And the wheelchair ramps to our sidewalks are horrendous. And I found that out in the last three or four years. I mean, some of them are so skinny and they're so offset on the, getting off the sidewalk onto a wheelchair ramp, it's dangerous. You look for a driveway.
So we did an inventory last year as part of the infrastructure master plan where we identified all the corners in town, what condition they were in and what still needed to be replaced. So we had the main corner ramp now, not the narrow ones coming in one direction. So there's much work to do there. And I hate to tell you, five thousand dollars doesn't buy you many ramps. It doesn't. But it was actually the council two terms ago that said we want to see money put away every year as part of some accessibility. In fact, it was also related to, FCSS did a study with seniors on accessibility.
Yep.
At that time, there was some commitment of the council to put money away annually and we've just simply tried to maintain it.
We're trying to make it more safe for seniors and.
Service club pick up something like that.
Yeah, no, we simply have, well, we put out a bid and we only do a couple a year. That's about all it does. Couple intersections a year. Every time we tear up a street, we'll redo them that way. And so that's in the capital of that street. So thankfully, we've been able to do a number of blocks every year. And so those are being done as we do the capital generally, not all of us, but generally. And this is a little extra. So yeah, it's a good program. We're a long way from complete.
Good.
It's coming.
No, that's great.
I didn't have anything else on page seven since last time we talked, or eight, or nine. Nine just had some FCSS tweaks. And so Kara's giving their program settled for the year and they kind of know where they're going to be at, so.
That one wastewater receiving study on page eight, we got thirty thousand dollars there. Tell me about that.
Yes. Now, that was in this year.
Two forty two, five oh four.
We haven't done that yet. You're going to actually see that roll over and I'll explain as part of our audit. We have to have an inspection every year of our water wastewater treatment processes. And one of the requirements that they said we need to start planning to do was where our wastewater goes into the river. They wanted some studies done of the impact of that all the way to the dam. And how that was diluting and how it was working itself into the system. And so we've, Bart's thinking there's going to be some other requirements that are going to be related to that, so it isn't done. And you probably see that as a rollover in twenty twenty. But that's the background of it. It's provincial requirement on anyone who dumps effluent into a river.
Concerned about the fishies.
Good question on that, mayor.
Go ahead.
How do you account for pastures that dump? You know, I mean, it's going to happen, like, and it's going to affect us. You know, all we can take in is right up to the bridge. We're, it's the St. Mary's. But we can't be held accountable for anything else.
I don't know. I assume there's some methodology there. I mean, you look at, we have a high water event and everything west of the town runs in our storm system.
Yeah, that's true.
We clean the whole dairy out and it's a storm system.
You're right.
I mean, that's a, that's a huge concern.
Well, my concern is too, is you go into these car washes and we got locals going in there with their horse trailers and you're the next one in there and you have to wade up to your knees.
And those are treated. So the car wash is treated. It's not a direct dump. So those have sumps to carry solids and then we treat the liquid. But yes, we certainly have to treat it. But that's what that's stemming from.
Okay, thank you.
Page ten, ten.
Page ten?
Our engineering miscellaneous, we just simply trimmed it down. We haven't been using much of that. So historically, and we have a bit of a reserve on if we need some contingency legal or contingency planning. So we've had a little bit of reserve. We felt that was something operationally we could cut. And then on two six two three three three, the bottom of ten, and this, this one's going to ping pong all budget cycle, but we reduced Mormon Trail back to four thousand. That one's seen three, two changes already, but.
By, by the way, I received regarding the Chautauqua, I received an email. There is a fellow that is willing to put on a new show for two thousand, well, two thousand twenty regarding the whole Chautauqua experience in music and dance and whatever. And it appears that three, two communities, McGrath and Sterling seem to be willing to do something. But I have not replied because I thought our reply was in a cut of the Chautauqua that the time is maybe not now. Are you feeling that way? I kind of need to know.
Yeah, we had the discussion earlier.
So I want to make sure that if I reply, I could reply, council is not supportive of carrying on with that experiment. Okay, fair enough.
Can you put a clap clap in there?
The only thing, page eleven, we just tweaked really small some of the regulations in the Badlands. Now, I was shown that meeting, I understand there was a resolution to drop the Badlands. My meeting boss is coming through town, the director of Badlands. She's coming through town on Thursday. So we're having a meet. So we'll have that discussion on Thursday. Summer games, this was not in twenty twenty from the start, but Randy's been acquiring a number of summer games. We may not be able to get that till twenty twenty three. There's some communities, I don't know if they have centennials or they're having some celebrations and they're trying to bring it in on twenty one, twenty two.
Doesn't break one heart.
It wasn't twenty twenty to start with, but I just throw it out there. Randy's working with them to get a date. That was everything on page eleven, twelve, thirteen. Any questions on the line?
Councillor Selk, can I ask you a question regarding the South Grow membership? I am trying to understand a little bit, is there any new communication from the ministry regarding the future of the Rida or are we still on a status quo? It appears that whoever asks as a minister or the deputy minister seem to have conflicting answers. So I'm trying to figure out where is the true final word?
That's a good question, mayor, because I think every minister that's been asked that question does a soft shoot around it and doesn't actually come right out and answer the question.
I mean, at the AUMA, we had the same person one time say no, the next time say, well, maybe. And I thought it was within three minutes of each other answers. And so I thought, where are we going? And then there is some MacDev officers that are asking and they are told it's going to be cut with not a timeframe. So we still don't know where we're going.
No, and we have a South Grow executive meeting tomorrow.
Okay, so.
If you can get there.
On page thirteen, Gulf.
Are we not there? We're not quite there?
Yeah, we are.
You are there? Okay, sorry.
Whole sixteen, the bench here, both firm until twenty twenty four. What is that though?
We've plunked it because we're going to discuss it at CCW next week. It was requested that we go over the Gulf pretty thoroughly next week at CCW. So we just, we recognize it's probably not twenty twenty, although it might be. We've just moved it for now. We figure if that project goes forward and if it's to venture, it won't impact the bottom line because the loan would offset the cost if that's how you proceed with it. So yeah, Hocken kind of kept it flagged, but yeah, we'll have more discussion what we want to do there next Tuesday. Page fourteen, the only real changes here, again, some little tweaks just based on the department's forecast. And then the one thing we added in the electrical is, how do you keep calling it GPS, but it's GIS software. Leonard would like to be, he's wanted to for years, to be able to electronically map the town system. So we currently do not have any kind of sophisticated mapping or inventory for the entire distribution system. And he's looking, he's been looking at different software to do that. What we've landed on is AutoCAD because we use the Civil piece of AutoCAD already that Brandon uses it and we can, we can use this as an extension.
Oh, yeah.
So we already have the base of AutoCAD, so we have the water and the sewer and the Civil and all that. So we can add the electrical components. But Leonard would like to be trained on how to use it properly so that over the year they can get the whole system on AutoCAD and start to be able to manage it a little better. So those costs with electrical, essentially, we just balance around. There are other operational expenses where the net is roughly the same, right? So they kind of self-fund. The department will self-funds for the most part.
All right. And there is the electrical little bet that's coming up for the, this year's budget that we'll discuss later. And there is some savings there, about forty thousand or so.
Not sure.
In the contract with foremost for this?
Oh, yeah. Well, sorry, the budget changed. Sorry, I was thinking the distribution by law. Yes, we'll be talking about that lots and surplus in that project, yes.
Yes. So in one way or the other, there is some money coming to cover this cost.
Jeff, under the light general operating, it's the last line item, light standard painting. Now, we're going to lose our step students. Are they the ones that, this is just material, isn't it? This is just paint?
No, no, we've actually contracted, the last few years, we've contracted Marshall Lines to do it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. In fact, I should even clarify that more. Since Gary sold the business, we've been contracting Gary to do it.
Gary.
Yeah, he's been doing it as something he likes to do in the summer. And so he does a heck of a job for us for the money we pay.
He's got his own equipment to get up?
Yeah, he's got a long old roller and he gets going. So yeah, we've been using Gary.
Good.
Yeah, he's been doing a good job.
Since we're talking about light standards, I noticed up on Main Street, across the street from the Flamingo Motel, there is a light standard there that's crush, kind of crushed in. And I've been waiting for it to fall over. And it's right there on the property of Vern Nielsen's that's down in Wyoming. Okay, if you want to take a look at that, because it was, somebody dinged that thing.
So that's really the changes in the operational side of the budget.
Good. Now, Jeff, I just want to throw out some more kudos. I have had nothing but phone, positive phone calls, one after another, on our Main Street lighting this year. Fantastic. It's beautiful when you go down that Main Street.
We seem to be losing a couple, like Derrick and N W. What's going on there? But I'll have to check that out.
Well, and a little bit farther down, I don't think some of the sets are quite in, but it really looks nice. It really, really looks nice.
It is. I love it.
That's pretty fun. So any lingering questions on operating?
No, you surely, you surely trimmed the budget quite nicely there.
We have a five hundred seventy nine thousand dollar surplus in operating.
I have one question before we go too far. Page fifteen, on the Mississippa monument. Is that actually moving forward? I haven't heard much about it.
Let's segue into capital right now.
We're not quite there.
I had a talk with Kara like a week ago when she's working at the hospital and she's still.
Thinking of.
Still pushing it that way.
I saw that.
We have two grants waiting for feedback, like waiting for responses submitted on behalf of the town for a considerable amount of the money. So we're just kind of waiting to hear what we, what they tell us.
What customizes a statue on a top?
Oh, yeah.
That is what is expensive.
Yeah. Have we had communication from the Blood Tribe on this and consultation with them? They're not involved with this?
Kara has talked. She is, she's involved in it.
Who?
Kara Baldwin.
She's involved with the principal of the Kanai School.
So she's still pushing it forward because I talked to her a week or two ago at the hospital, so.
So why it pops up as a change on this budget is, as per the direction of council last time, we took our cash piece out of it and put all the value as a contributed asset. Somebody was going to be contributing to cash. Now, we can have that debate as it gets closer, but we, the discussion was we're putting up the land and the maintenance in perpetuity. So the other parties need to see what they can raise for cash. And the grant funding may come a long way. We just don't know yet. So we took out the town's cash portion and put it as fully funded in the budget as a contingency expense. We won't do it unless we have full funding.
Okay. Jeff, that money there, the twenty four thousand?
That was the difference at the last budget between what we had as revenue and the total expense.
So we're putting in the land and some work.
And the maintenance, the maintenance.
And that's our contribution.
Somewhere in the budget, we're upgrading one of our bucket trucks for, for long term use. It's cheaper than replacing. And that's excellent.
Yeah, we had three hundred thousand dollars in for a new truck when we came here in October. Leonard had a company come down. I don't, I don't know much about this. All I know is that for, and I don't even know how much we had in, let me tell you.
Three hundred eighty.
Sorry. But yes, we're thinking we can do, replace some major components of the truck because it has pretty low miles. And keep it around for another eight or ten years hopefully. That's the theory there. That's the theory there.
Hmm.
So, on page 15, this first chunk is really, it's all the capital revenue, and none of that's changed except for the monument piece since we met last time. So what would be coming out of reserves, grants, all that stuff is there. In fact, nothing changed on the revenue side of capital since the last time we visited. But some things have changed on the expense side of capital, and that starts on the bottom page 16. We just discussed the monument, so it was reduced to exclude the inattention from town. So that's a fully funded piece. The peace officer vehicle was removed, which is a big piece. We had a small addition, if you go to page 17, Brandon's asked if we can make this work, and I need to look at how we were funding it, I'll look at that here in a minute. He would really like to try and do something different in front of the TD Bank Holland Insurance when we get heavy rain. So what happens is, everything goes downhill from both directions to in front of those stores, and the sidewalk's only that high.
Yeah.
And it goes, and it will run right through those buildings. And Brandon would like to propose a drain that sits flush with the curb and runs just under the cement all the way to the back and into a manhole to help offset, we would actually, sorry, not into a manhole, it would go out just into the land in the back, because we know the storm sewer is overwhelmed. That's why it's backing up.
Right.
So this would be, and it would go down that lane between the TD and the Dollar Shore?
Right.
And, and it would be just below the surface, but run it essentially almost overland, and then back by the concrete plant, it would daylight it.
Right.
To help supplement the, the demand on the storm sewer, because we don't have a great storm capacity there.
Yeah.
It's not very good.
Counselor Burns?
Kay's Barber Shop Subway, that sidewalk curb.
Is the same problem.
Are we doing something on that to fix that situation, because?
The scope of that has proven to be huge.
Yeah.
To change your elevations, the length and distance, you need to change your elevations.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to be difficult.
I got an earful from Kay.
Yeah, yeah, me too, the other day.
Everybody has.
I'm concerned, too, if somebody was into Kay's there just a couple of weeks ago that fell down, smashed his knee, and, I mean, I'm concerned with lawsuits and stuff like that. I know lawsuits happen. I, I, I have a close family member that slipped on a sidewalk that wasn't taken care of with the ice removal, and it was a thirty thousand dollar touch, but anyways.
Yeah, it's not as, you have, you have all of that water running north.
Yeah.
And to try and change the natural elevation of a fully built-out established street.
What about the storm sewers or drains or something?
Probably freeze.
Yeah.
Right, so we looked at grading systems that would catch it, but one, one day of running water and then the cool night and it's full ice.
Maybe we better put a couple of sandboxes in or.
It's interesting that, we had requests to remove the sandbox off of there about four years ago.
Yeah, we need it, probably.
They, they requested it gone, so we moved it.
Yeah, well, because it was misuse.
Yeah, it was.
Right?
It was, yeah.
They were absolutely misuse.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a trouble spot, for sure.
Kids are gonna have to throw it all over.
Because they're gonna be coming to us. I know.
I'm wondering if on a curb right from the lane going down, if there we could have some sandbags possibly to force them?
Not sandbags crossing the sidewalk.
I know, it's not very good.
Which is, no, no wheelchairs can go by, nobody's got their shoes.
Yeah, you're right, you're exactly right.
So, yeah.
I mean, no matter which way you look at it, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah.
The water will go the natural way down.
The guys at the rank have been trying to keep that, the ramp into the laneway, with the, keep that scraped down a little better, so, because over the winter sometimes that really happens.
Yeah, it really is very thick.
So.
There's no solution, really.
Sun never hits it, once it melts, and the sun never hits in front of the store.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no.
That storm drain freezes up all the time, so it runs down the curb, its storm drain freezes up, jumps on the sidewalk and heads down.
Have we ever considered heated sidewalks and stuff like that? I mean, people do that with their private property, but.
Yeah.
It's an insult.
Is that something that might look into?
Potentially.
Yes.
Potentially, yeah.
Anyways.
Yeah, that one's a.
It's a frustrating one, I mean, maybe Kay should see if he wants the sandbags back.
Well, I think he needs to have some communication, because, I mean, he's filling everybody's ears.
I know, it does with me, too.
Me, too.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I know.
Okay, I have to listen.
You have to.
I, I am wondering, Jeff, if maybe, maybe a conversation with him would be a good, salt and sand be already a useful thing if he had a small box of it?
Just down past him, we have some building owners that don't do a good job of scraping the sidewalks.
And there, too. And up, up north from him, same story. It's not very safe.
We visited with them this week, I phoned one of them myself and told them that this was really problematic and something to give, because I knew them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we've, we've got some neighbors there that don't.
I mean, I, I tried to walk the other day.
What about our bylaw that covers the snow removal and that situation?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Are we gonna have to start getting fines?
Starting, yeah.
And maybe that'll wake them up, I don't know, because it's a scary situation there and that's.
I agree with you.
They complained to us last week, so he was gonna follow up with some.
I, I agree with you, we agree.
All right.
Two thirty-seven, seven sixty-two, storm sewer, the, tell me about this downtown storm water pump station project.
Where you're looking here.
Two thirty-seven, two thirty-seven, seven sixty.
Thirty-one thousand.
Yeah, and it goes up, it goes to 2023.
Is that a twinning? Is that a story?
No, that is a de-watering system in the downtown, particularly, we're focusing in front of John Bright's and Kirk's Tire.
Yeah.
So everything goes to there, well, not everything, much goes to there, and then it goes into the creek from there. The problem we have is the elevation of the creek is very different than when that infrastructure was installed, I don't know, pick a date, forty, fifty, sixty years ago. And so when the creek gets to a certain height, they can't evacuate the water.
Take it, no.
So what does it do? And you can ask John.
It pools. He has four sump pumps.
Yep, it shoots out the storm sewer, out the manhole, and it creates a massive lake in there, and it goes right in John's garage. Now, this isn't a project to try and accommodate John, although if it's a byproduct of it, that's awesome.
Yeah.
The point there is, we want some on-demand pumps that are in vaults underground, that when the water level in those manholes hits a certain point, it begins to pump overland downstream into the creek.
Now, don't we experience that program next intersection also?
Well, it, it is a problem there, too, but again, it bottleneck's there, so it's backing up from there.
Okay.
Now, this one, while it's in there for 2022, is contingent on the resiliency program funding it.
Okay.
So it has a corresponding funding source, which is the Alberta Resiliency Program, and we talk with them fairly frequently about how that might work.
They won't let us dredge.
No, we've actually brought that up, that we could lower the elevation of the entire creek so that our outlets don't get, but that's, that's a non-starter.
Yeah, the fish are gonna be affected.
It's a non-starter, they did that in the eighties.
I know.
Yeah, it happened in the eighties.
Yeah, Keith Beavens was the administrator.
Maybe not the best idea, but it happened. So that's the story there, but it is in the budget as funded by resiliency.
Good.
Yeah.
But we have some big pumps that we can put down there in the case.
So we have PTO-driven pumps that we can get down there, the problem is, it's a timing issue.
Right.
You know, we never get heavy rains, it's two in the afternoon on a Wednesday.
So it's Saturday morning.
Always at nighttime.
Always on a Sunday, yeah.
You know, those kind of things, right? But the guys are scrambling to get everything down, and, you know, it, it takes some time. So this would have an on-demand overland pumping system, that's the design.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, we reduced a couple water line, we, I, I mentioned earlier on the sewer line at the bottom there, we'll line the existing pipe instead of replace it. So that was Seventh Avenue versus Second. So we've tried to do some little tweaks on the capital. On the next page, page eighteen, it's the last item in purple for this budget, and we'll, we'll talk on the capital in a second, just about the funding. Randy's meeting some quotes on the pickleball court specifically fencing, asphalt, painting, nets, all that. It, it was, it was fifty-five, not forty-five thousand, but that forty-five was a bit of a guess at that point, so.
Yeah. I'd suggest we stroke that item out.
So.
Which one, Counselor?
I appreciate that, I want to, I want to mention something, though, with a bit of a clause on that. I, I still like the project, but one thing I was gonna recommend, if you go to this page now, and I apologize, I know it's, I get it, but if you go to the capital one.
If we need to find money.
So we're sitting with a seventy-five thousand dollar deficit right now, there are still some numbers we're gonna get worked through that are gonna come in. But then I get looking at capital and saying, what is cash and MSI funded? And the reason I look at those two things is obviously if you can save something that's cash-funded, there's cash.
Right.
If it's MSI funded, we have great discretion on what we use MSI for, and we can apply it to things where we were using cash before.
Yeah.
So when you look at the pickleball court as an example, it is forty-five thousand dollar MSI funded and ten thousand dollar tax funded. If we were to not do that in this year, you all of a sudden have forty-five thousand dollars of MSI that when you look at, we have three, four other projects that are tax-funded, we could probably cover with those, with that MSI, and free up cash.
Right.
That would be the hope. But what I would suggest, Counselor Selk, is that if you wish to collectively not do this project in 2020, that in 2020, we do a CFEP, a community foundation, and a New Horizons for Seniors grant to probably fund seventy-five percent.
Would that be something that council would like to entertain?
Yeah, sounds like a great idea.
It will free money very rapidly for us.
I just think we get the Lions on board or, or one of the clubs and say, and then get the seniors to do a New Horizons application, because that is something that's a capital piece that might fit, and New Horizons is generally not too oversubscribed, your odds are pretty good there. I actually haven't checked since the federal budget, but it still exists, but it's one in, it did recently.
So are we okay with removing this item, Counselor? Okay, thank you.
Twenty-one, and we will commence in 2020, though, to write the grants for it. So we'll have funding in place.
Right, I mean, let's, let's try to not lose it from.
For sure, we'll put it in 2021.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I think, I think I asked this question last year when we were talking about pickleball parks. Is there space behind the seniors, the Tanner Center for pickleball courts?
No.
Not enough room there, huh?
You know, right now, they're not, they're not unhappy with the location they have.
Mm-hmm.
The issue was the bathrooms.
Talking about pickleball.
Out of pickleball, off the pickleball.
I'm talking pickleball.
Okay, all right. Yeah, sorry, I was going bocce.
Bocce'd that one.
So the pickleball is not that there is no venue, it's, it just is not convenient.
Well, see, they're still using church, too, aren't they?
For pickleball, yeah.
But has anybody had any communication from the church about whether or not they want people to continue to use them for pickleball?
Okay, so let me give you a little bit of what I got for information. No pickleball team could play if they become a club to which they subscribe.
Right.
So, in other words, you can't do competitions between clubs.
It's just a recreational thing.
But if you are groups, yes, but if you talk to Counselor Selk, when I booked it every day on the calendar, he got questions, and I was told, it's a heavy usage for a floor that might not sustain that type of traffic.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
In reality, Counselor, if both state presidents reach the point in time where they decided that there was, and, and they've been told this by the facilities group, that it's creating a lot of wear and tear on the floors, they may eventually reach the decision where you're out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that is, we're not there?
Yeah.
So we have to be collectively careful of the facility, right? It's expensive to redo floors.
Mm-hmm.
One other item I wanted to talk to you about was the spray park again, and this is, Randy and I met with the Rotarians, Justin and Skylar and James last Monday, and we had a great meeting. But what it did is, I was just trying to make sure that our expectations were all on the same page, and the answer was they weren't.
Uh, yes.
So I said, I need to come back to council and just make sure, both parties, I think, can accommodate the other if we're on the same page with our expectations. And so I'm trying to pull something up here real quick, because I want to use to illustrate. Shen, can you hook me up where I can take over the project with my tablet?
They were at the community thing last night trying to raise funds.
Yeah, yeah.
Essentially, it has to do with what we committed to and what I understood we committed to and what I need to come up with.
Yeah, so I wanted to show an illustration of where I think we can be principled in maintaining what we told them we would contribute, but at the same time, help without being extra cash out, and that's gonna make sense, I hope, in a minute. But here, here's what the story is, as of right now, they are seventy thousand dollars short of the cash that they need, with a big K yet, that that includes seventy thousand dollars in cash from the town. Now, we had committed to them, I said ninety, they thought it was ninety-seven, but let's say ninety-seven, because I didn't tell them, we have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for it. So they're anticipating a ninety-seven thousand dollar contribution from the town, with twenty-seven thousand of that being some level of in-kind, washroom expansion, ground preparation, utility extension.
Removal the building.
Move the building, all that stuff, leaving seventy thousand dollars in cash. So that's right now their current plan. Shen, just tell me when to click on Air Media here. So what we, what we found was, I need to have a discussion with you guys tonight about where are we at on this whole, we call it the in-kind piece, but everything but the cash piece, because it's getting to be substantial. So if the expectation is we replace the building under the ninety-seven thousand dollars, that's a huge chunk of that that eats up the ninety-seven, like if we replace the camp kitchen, for example.
Yeah, kitchen.
Is that an expectation?
Well, no, not necessarily. But if we're gonna, so, but, so what I would put back to you as a counsel is to say, well, if there's a whatever cost, X amount of dollars to replace the camp kitchen, are we covering that cost over and above the ninety-seven thousand?
Right.
So that's the question I'm posing, that the Rotary wants to have some level of comfort, that it's not expected that we're also saying, hey, guys, you gotta raise the money that you're already seventy thousand short, you gotta come up with another fifteen, twenty to cover up the building replacement. Someone's gotta do it, the question is who?
So, I was talking with Justin last night at the, I mean, at the Community Awareness Night, and he was pitching to me that we were the ones who decided to move it to there, and so we should be the ones who move the building.
Maybe.
And he's, he's right, you know, in a way, and so that was, that's their thinking. So there is an expectation over and above the amount that we've committed to.
But is it not also if we had left it in central, in the center of the town, we had to move the, some kind of things, too?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that wasn't a great location.
Right, so no matter which way we cut it, there was
Yeah.
an issue.
Yeah.
Jeff. Spray park issue of location. At, sooner or later, they're going to want to redesign the announcement booth and all that kind of stuff down there at the Walker Field. Are they going to have that room to expand if we put a spray park in there?
Yeah, I think, I, I think so. This is back, so the, as, it only goes as westerly as where the camp kitchen is now.
Yeah.
So it's quite a distance from the existing building. The only thing we would have to be cautious of is if we build a new pavilion or gazebo or something, we don't want that sitting where it could be a problem down the road.
Right.
Or that, that's something we just need to consider.
Yeah.
All right, so Counsel, the question is, are we in for the moving of that building and replacing that building?
Uh, where would we put that?
Yeah, where would you, yeah.
But.
I, my personal thought from the beginning of this was that either the Rotarians, the Lions, or the Service Club would somehow apply for grants and raise funds to replace that. It wouldn't be incumbent upon us to replace that. That was my.
That's what I kind of understood from the beginning too.
Maybe I was out to lunch on that, but.
No, I understood it the same way, but.
Me too.
Is there a strong desire to replace that building? And if we do, where would we?
Well, it belonged to the Lions, right?
I guess so.
When we've looked at the, it's worth, we've looked and said, we could go immediately west of the new playground with kind of a long, narrow pavilion type style. So some, a roof with pillars, maybe a row of picnic tables down the middle.
Similarly, they've got some of the church stakehouse.
You see them a lot in these churches in the States.
Yeah.
That idea.
You see it in, you see it in Lethbridge.
We got it in Lethbridge, yeah. The Institute Building has one.
Yeah.
They call it, they're, they're great.
Okay, so that was what we were thinking. They're not particularly expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, I say particularly, so that's been fifteen grand by the time you pour a cement pad and build them.
Another question, has, how has the communication been with the Lions Club? We gave them part of the Lions' part for the playground. Now, they're needing more for the spray park. Has, has there been a communication with the Lions Club on that regard?
Actually, I spoke with Mr. Andy Strang last Thursday, and he went to the Rotarians' meeting the Tuesday previous.
Okay.
So I chuckled a bit and it was fine, but Andy came to me and said, hey, when are you going to talk to me about moving that building? I said, what do you mean? He says, well, I was just at the Rotary meeting and they said you were going to talk to me about moving the building. I said, well, it sounds like they just talked to you about moving the building. I said, Andy, this has been talked about for a couple of years, it's just not done yet. And he says, no, I know, and we had a good visit about it, and I said, look, this, this isn't even funded yet. And so when we get to the point that the funding's in place and it looks inevitable, I said, you and I, I told Andy, I said, you and I will meet. We'll talk. And, and so I said, kind of talk to your people and get a bit of a feel for it. So what I wanted to show you on here, Counsel, now this is up. This is just an example of, I don't know if I have the laser here or not.
This is our infrastructure costs.
So you're gonna walk over and get food, huh?
Apparently, the message is there.
Thumbs up on that.
I think I've told you this, this is a real aside, one time, Mary and I, we always use this messaging. And this was back when Counselor Dave Smith was on the council, and one of, he made a comment that was kind of funny, and one of us kind of played off that joke, but our computer was hooked up to the screen. It wasn't, wasn't the best move, but. So what I wanted to show you, for example, when I asked Brandon, I said, give me an idea, and we've talked about this number, of the utility extension, water utility extension, okay? So I use it as an example.
For the spray park.
Yeah.
So he said, okay, the main material, six grand, road gravel, fifty-two hundred, the valves, two grand, and then machine labor, sixteen grand. Obviously, that's the bulk of this. So technically, we will incur the labor costs associated to that project.
Yeah.
But we're going to incur those labor costs somewhere. So that's kind of the part where I'm saying, we might be able to help with the in-kind by saying, okay, we will have hard costs on machinery, we will have fuel, we will have wear and tear, we will have breakdowns, repairs. But it, it's not sixteen thousand dollars worth.
No.
And the labor, yes, it will be allocated to the value of this project. But it's not that it was labor above and beyond what we had.
What you pay, yeah, right.
So the question is, it goes a long way to help the Rotarians if, for example, we don't say, well, you have to pay all of our costs, but maybe it doesn't have to include all of that sixteen grand as an example. And I'm okay with that. It doesn't even offend me at all, and I'm usually the one really a stickler about reclaiming those costs. We would reclaim them on paper as the value of the asset for depreciation and asset management purposes. But it doesn't mean we have to proclude it from the amount we were offering to the Rotary as support.
Yeah, because you already have a line item for wages.
Yeah, it's not, there's no additional.
And for machine and all that stuff, yeah.
So that's one thing as an example, and that also, you see it again here for the sewer, a little bit of pipe, a little bit of gravel, and then machine and labor. So actual, you know, fuel, wear and tear costs, a thousand bucks maybe, in this case, maybe two or three. And the rest is kind of already captured in the budget. So that's the way I'm proposing that, oh, I should, I forgot to tell you, if you take our water extension, sewer extension, and the campground shelter, now there's a couple of different scenarios here, that would only leave us after all those costs with thirty-seven thousand dollars in cash for them. The in-kind would be almost sixty thousand dollars. But that's because it contains a lot of that machine labor, machine time and labor, because that's how we cost all of our asset and capital projects. And then the new building, that cost varies, I don't have it up, I don't have it up here. It varies anywhere from eight thousand just to demo and clean the site to twenty-five thousand to demo, clean the site, move a building, pour a new cement pad, build a pavilion, all that stuff.
You're gonna dig up the cement pad that's there, right?
All right, so at the end of the day, they had all that in their description of the project. So that become less expensive at the end of the day from their perspective if we put all that in-kind and take it out literally of their quotes.
And I, I'm actually not recommending, but you can do it if you want here. I'm not recommending we simply don't account for the hard costs we will incur. We will have to go buy six thousand dollars worth of pipe.
No, I totally understand that.
That's cash.
That's a hard cost.
Yeah, it's a hard cost. You could, if I was the Rotarians, they could argue, whether it's successful or not, that their project doesn't require a four-inch pipe, but we want it for long-term planning, so why is that project stuck with the entirety of the cost?
No.
Sure, they could argue that.
Yeah.
But if we're willing to be lenient on the other stuff, I don't think they will argue that.
Yeah.
Because they are expecting that of our ninety-seven thousand, twenty-seven thousand of it is in-kind, that it is not cash. That's their expectation, and they want that, but that seventy of it is cash.
But then we giving them a lot more in-kind that what they expect, so which reduce the amount of cash we truly will give them at the end of the day.
And that upsets their financial scenario.
Right.
So this is what I'm wondering, how do we reconcile that idea? Because we do now sixty-seven thousand dollar in-kind, as you mentioned, at the end of the day, that's what it would cost us on paper.
Sixty thousand, yes.
Right?
Yeah.
It's on paper, it's not true exact cost to us. But at the end of the days, I still want seventy thousand dollar in cash.
Correct, and we can't satisfy both if we intend to account all of the machine and labor towards, within our ninety-seven thousand. We can't accommodate both.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jeff, what do you suggest we do then?
Well, I'm on the fence about this because you know what my feeling is on the project in the first place.
Well, the timing, the timing was never a great, from a financial perspective. And they know that, we know that, and is lingering and is still the same problem.
And we're, we're gonna anticipate, and even the Rotarians agree on this, seventy-five hundred dollars a year in increased operational costs to have this thing, you know, it's going to be a maintenance issue. It's going to be one of those things, it's always going to be a bit of a controversy, it's gonna have these controversial leanings with the public because we're gonna have to close it every time there's glass on it, every time the water doesn't test correctly. You know, it has all those implications, frankly, from an operational point.
It's an expensive item, yeah.
Not a bad one, but they're a long way down this road, and I support trying, I, I support the Rotary a hundred percent with what they do in the community.
Okay, but at this point, they're still quite short of cash.
They are, so one thing that came out of our meeting is, we are meeting again January thirty-first, or somewhere in that last week of January. And that is the time with which there must be a decision if this project is happening or not. And that doesn't mean it can't happen scaled down.
That's right, because of the grant, because of the grant I got and the time.
And so I told them, we were trying to accommodate them in the budget as best we could, but if we came back and said, you know what? We can't give you seventy thousand in cash because of the in-kind, we can give you fifty, I don't know what that number is, but we can give you fifty.
What it is.
Maybe it's a scaled project. It's a three clover leaf project, maybe the third clover.
Is gone.
Doesn't happen.
Yeah. Maybe it's just a big circle too, I don't know, who knows?
Counselor South.
Much cash have we got in the bank reserve towards this project?
Hundred thousand.
So we have a hundred thousand.
That's what you have on the reserve here, Jeff.
Ninety-seven.
You have hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's all coming out of reserves, that's correct, yeah.
Hundred thousand.
We have a hundred thousand dollars reserve for this project.
But they don't.
I don't agree with your last part of that statement. We have a hundred thousand dollars in general recreation reserves that we are spending for this project.
Right.
But you can spend it on, you could spend it hypothetically on anything, but it has been earmarked for, boy, two years now since the inception of this project, right?
Yeah. Counselor Court.
I was told by a super good source that come heck or high water, this project's gonna go ahead. He says, we're not gonna let it die, so I don't know if that means they're gonna try and find more funding somewhere else.
Yeah.
Which I assume that's what that means. But.
Okay, Counselor Penry, Counselor.
They're pretty determined to have it go through, that's all I'm gonna say.
I mean, we can help a lot, but we cannot spend all our eggs in the same basket.
No.
Not a year like this year where we're scraping and trying to find ten thousand here and ten thousand there.
Jeff, we got.
Times are not easy.
We got the spray park down there, but we got a water intake pump house down there. Is that for our irrigation for the, the field?
It's almost altogether abandoned now because we don't take in from the creek anymore since we installed the community irrigation line. It just houses the irrigation control, that's it.
Second part of my question, how does this fit into the environment? Is the environment gonna allow this kind of thing that close to the creek?
It doesn't dump, so it's a research system.
Yeah.
You insisted collectively on that.
Yeah.
So we're not dumping. We did entertain a dump system either into, we actually asked them to look at it dumping straight into the creek through the storm system, so we didn't have to pump it and treat it.
Right.
And the answer was no, because we can't dechlorinate it between there and the creek.
Yeah, and, yeah.
So this is a research system, and I would suggest we don't have environmental, or environmental concerns.
Now, is it gonna put pressure on our, on our storm sewer and stuff like that?
No, because it recycles, it's a recycling pump.
Okay.
It's the same system as what Tiber has, it's totally recycling.
Yeah.
Counselor.
As I talked again to Justin last night, I asked him about the funding, how things were going and stuff, and he said, now they've got more people coming forward, corporate sponsors and private individuals. So that's coming into play, and maybe that's gonna help, maybe that's where the comment comes from.
Okay, so I think at this point, let's maybe stay with our scenario. The in-kind. Dollar.
What's your collective feeling on machinery and labor? Do we wanna look at what our actual hard costs are on that and don't make a correction of it on the ninety-seven?
Personally, I would support that because it doesn't change the budget.
Yeah.
Jeff, I think that when you have that meeting with your Rotary Club, I think the facts need to be laid right out on the table, that this is where the town's position is.
And that was the intent of our last meeting, and then I told them I'd come see you tonight.
Yeah, and, and we talk about in-kind and what's it gonna cost us in-kind and as.
Yeah, I think I need to realize that this year,
Exactly.
we're just scraping the bottom of the barrel to try to find a few dollars for projects ourselves. So we're cutting projects, we're not helping.
So I think we can accommodate them quite well for their in-kind needs.
Yeah.
So, so one of the other pieces here, which isn't priced out, we have electrical poles right smack in the middle where this thing's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
With that, I asked Leonard to go look at it, he said he thinks they can arrange that, because some of them feed the buildings.
Right.
Right, so it's not just, let's move a pole.
Okay.
Because they feed different areas in there, so he's gone to look at it and feels he can manage that quite readily. We have irrigation lines all through where this will go. So it, again, I know, I always appreciate that the club is excited and they're raising money, but there's a lot of work to do to prepare this site. Now, by the time you move all your irrigation, you move your electrical.
Expand your road.
But there again, we chose that site too.
Yeah, and I, and we're happy to participate. The question is, how much of that labor and machine time do we wish to account to them? Or how much will we?
Well, I think if we could do it as, I mean, normally when we have machine time, we reserve some of that difference into an account. Maybe that's our donation.
I'd like to propose one other element to this when we are having a conversation with the Rotary Club. Say, this is great, you came to us with the, this project, and that's wonderful. We're proposing the next project for you, and we'd like some walking trails that are paved, and we want you to help fund that.
Absolutely, they would be.
Yeah, and I think.
Or reunion center expansion.
Yeah, actually, I think there's minimal to that.
Well, the Rotary is moving away from projects in communities that require long-time, long-term maintenance.
Yeah.
Because the cost to the communities is ballooning and is become no longer a pleasure, but a little bit of a pain.
Burning center, of course.
So in a sense, that a gift to the town becomes a burden to the taxpayer, so it becomes, collectively, they know that, and so they're, they're looking at different type of projects in the future.
I know dinner's here, if I could get two more things related to the spray park, what is the feeling on the building? So do we wanna say that the building costs, whether that's a new pavilion, whether it's simply getting rid of the old one and clearing the site now, that those costs will have to be dealt with within our ninety-seven thousand? Or as long as we have a solid go-forward plan from the Lions and the Rotary for replacement at a future date, we simply get rid of that thing and work towards a new one in two years or three years? I, I don't know, I don't know where to go with that.
I like that idea.
That could be a twenty thousand dollar touch out of our contribution.
So.
Right now.
Personally, I think if we had the Rotary and the Lions come together, once we have a little bit, a better sense of what's going on here with our in-kind, I think if the two of them could come up with a move-forward plan for the future, not this year's budget, but next year or the year after, towards a nice replacement for that campground kind of covered area, I think that would be a more, I think it would be suiting, suiting our budget better. That's my opinion.
And if we did it that way, if we deferred that, the money that we have that they want to use is gonna be there for this project, right? And it's not going towards a building or.
I think they will have to kind of look at reserving themselves thirty thousand dollar in the future and decide how they're going to do it.
Yeah.
I, I don't think we've heard the N from the Lions Club. That's just my feelings.
Potentially, I've only talked to Andy casually.
I know.
But with the assumption that we'd be having further discussions in the future.
But I mean, fair enough, they lost a building, they gifted it to the town, they deserve to have it back. That's a fair, it's a fair statement.
Yeah.
And I know, I don't think anybody would see that as being a wrong idea. Anyways, would you try at one time to get them together and help them consider the viability of moving that idea for a year or two?
Now, we, if you, if you will, you don't have to, if you can bear with you for one more item, we probably.
We bear.
Wait in the budget. It's the campground expansion, and I'm just looking at ways to potentially balance this budget.
Page we on here now?
Still on this capital, this capital sheet, if you go.
Okay, gotcha.
Seventy-two or twenty-seven.
The cost for some of that building infrastructure, the washroom and all that, has really ballooned on us, and right now, we have a hundred and fifty thousand for next year, a hundred of it being in MSI and fifty of it being in cash, tax funded. I haven't talked a lot to Brandon Jensen about this, but I'm wondering if we, if Counsel would want to give some direction to see if we could do.
Can we phase it?
To do a little bit this year and a little bit next, or sorry, in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, but get the sites open. But maybe we're not going to do the washroom or some of the amenity pieces
Yeah.
this year and finish it up. Because that would free up, I mean, that's, that's MSI and cash. MSI and cash.
Yeah.
Those two things free up our budget in a hurry, and I'm wondering if eighty thousand dollars, and I need to get that totally figured out, but if ninety thousand dollars will get us almost everything but the washroom, for example, and in fully serviced sites, a washroom isn't as imperative, they, they have facilities in RV.
Yeah, they have their own facilities, I mean, it's like, they're like a home.
So what's the condition of the, of the existing washroom facility that they have down there? Are they still good?
Yeah, that's okay, just with the, so it's very much on the north side of the campground. There's been some discussion about having another one on the south side. And adding the fifteen sites, we thought, well, we would run the underground utility and the infrastructure to accommodate that, because we need something to put our irrigation and electrical controls in anyway. So we were gonna put them in the washroom facility.
Yeah.
And then have a small men's and women's washroom on each side.
But for the time being, I think we could probably get away with just the existing washroom, because, I mean, I've been to some pretty big campsites, and they have one kind of, one big.
Central, yeah.
Bathroom facility, but they don't have them scattered around, they just have the one. And, and, and I'm talking about a site that's got four hundred campsites, you know, over in Salmon Arm area, and so.
But we're, we're talking the modern-day RV, and these are long-term.
Yeah, yeah.
Back in that north, and they're gonna have their own.
They're gonna have their own facilities already.
Absolutely.
And they're really not gonna need them.
And it's a full service.
Exactly. So they might not even need them.
Counselor Selk, you've been so patient.
No, the discussion's already been had, I think it's something that we can postpone.
So if we can look at taking that building piece out, that might get us really, really close to being balanced, because it'll take the cash portion out.
Mm-hmm.
And see if we can just rely on the site.
I like that idea, yeah.
And advise us fifty thousand in cash.
Yep.
That's what I have to present tonight, Counsel.